Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the November sixth, two thousand twenty-three Crest Hill City Council meeting to order at seven P. M. If everyone will please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Grace Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Condon.
President.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Rashad. Dorell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Giselle.
Mayor.
Tina Oberlin.
President.
Mark Sepini.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kugel.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, the first order of business this evening is to conduct a public hearing required by the I E P A with respect to alter- alternative water source distribution system improvements and the preliminary environmental impacts determination. Uh, we have Karina Petro from Strand in the audience tonight. You have information in your packet. I will turn it over to our city engineer, Ron Wedeman, for some opening comments. Ron?
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Before we do that, I want to ask for a roll call or a motion to go into a public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by all the person overland, seconded by Alderman Sipity, uh, for a public hearing. Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rashad.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepini.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kugel.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, the public hearing is opened at seven oh one P. M. Uh, information is in your packet, and I will turn it over to our city engineer, Ron Wedeman, for some opening comments. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. The only procedure for issuing loans from the Public Water Supply Loan Program requires that the I E P A conduct an assessment of the environmental impacts of proposed improvements. As part of this process, the city is required to solicit public comments regarding the environmental impacts of the proposed improvement. Um, I'm gonna have Karina here just give a brief, uh, uh, outline of what these projects are. Um, and then when she is done, let's open up to any public comments. These public comments will be recorded and sent to the I E P A after this, or after an established set of time. So, Karina?
So, um, as everyone knows by now, the city of Crest Hill is planning on switching to Lake Michigan eventually, um, in twenty thirty. Um, and so we worked with the city. You're good. Microphone? Is that better? Um, so we worked with the city back in November twenty twenty-two, um, to submit a project planning document for what Ron mentioned is the, the Public Water Supply Loan Program, um, State Revolving Loan Fund with I E P A. Um, and so there were several projects included in the one project plan document, um, and they are as follows. There is the lining of the water main along Route thirty, Theodore and Broadway Street. Um, that is needed to reduce, um, water loss. Once you switch to Lake Michigan water, you have to reduce that loss down to less than ten percent, um, per the Lake Michigan allocation, so that'll help there. It's a very busy, um, um, older main, so lining that should, should help, um, reduce that water loss, but reduce, um, disruption of the street as well, instead of open cutting and completely replacing that main. Um, there's also a storage tank and receiving slash pumping station, um, at the two, uh, Lake Michigan water receiving sites along Kane Farm Road. There's gonna be what we call the east, uh, receiving pumping station and the west receiving pumping station. Um, the city is going from a multi-point source, uh, dri- distribution system where you have wells all over the city, and you're going to just getting water at two points. So, you're gonna need, um, storage there and an adequate infrastructure to be able to distribute that water to the outskirts of your town. Um, and then we have a new eight-inch water main along Kane Farm Road, so that one is a multipurpose project. Eventually, um, you could perhaps get well fourteen. Um, that is, is designed and whatnot, but you might not need it, um, before twenty thirty, before you switch over to Lake Michigan water. So, we're gonna hold on to the design of that, and, um, when you see how the city is growing and the demands are growing, eventually that well could go in, um, or not. The, either way, we, we will have an eight-inch water main going from that proposed well site, which is actually right here behind Menards, um, to the existing well ten, uh, water treatment plant. And that can be a raw water main where it conveys the well fourteen water to that treatment plant to treat it for iron and manganese like you have at all the rest of your wells. Or if, if you don't need well fourteen, that could also be used to take finished water and, um, distribute it to the, bring water from the east to the west side of your system, because uh, one of those, the eastern receiving and pumping station that I just mentioned is gonna be at that well ten site. So, it has multiple uses there, um, in case you don't end up putting in well fourteen. There was also the retrofit of the well ten site in that project planning document to treat raw well fourteen water if needed. Um, and then lastly, there was a water main replacement in the project plan, uh, along Root and SAC, Root Street and SAC Drive. That was originally proposed to help finish water travel from the east to the west side of the system. But now that we've worked, um, the, the well fourteen raw water main into being dual purpose, we don't need the Root and SAC, um, new water main any longer. So, while that's in the project plan, that can just be ignored. Um, we don't need it anymore. And water modeling supports that as well. Um, there's three main phases for these projects to occur. Uh, phase one includes that eight-inch, uh, raw water main, well fourteen water main is what I'll call it, even though it can convey finished water, um, along Kayton Farm Drive, or Kayton Farm Road. That's in quarter three of twenty twenty-four. Plan for construction starting then. Phase two is, uh, the water main lining, the new storage tank, and the pumping slash receiving stations. That's in the first quarter of twenty twenty-six. And then phase three is that, uh, well ten retrofit, if you need it, uh, in quarter three of twenty twenty-five. Um, the project plan, supplemental process included several environmental review steps. Um, the following reviews showed that, or concluded that adverse effects were unlikely. It's the I D N R, uh, State Historic Preservation Office Section one oh six review. Um, the I D N R Eco Cat, Illinois Endangered Species Act review, the Illinois Natural Areas Preservation Act review, and the Illinois Wetlands Act review. All of those showed that adverse effects were unlikely. Um, and then the project plan also included a submission to the I D N R Office of Water Resources, which resulted in I D N R confirmation that the proposed projects are exempt from needing a, um, Office of Water Resources permit for construction. We'll still have to go through the process of permitting for construction through I E P A, as is typical, but I D N R said they don't need their own specific permit for construction, 'cause effects are unlikely. Um, and then lastly, the project plan included a submission to the U. S. Army Corps of Engineers for consultation under section four oh four of the Clean Water Act. Um, U. U. S. Army Corps doesn't have a super great process for determining if a construction permit is necessary at the super preliminary stages. Um, they kinda have to go out there once they know the exact, um, limits and depth of your projects and whatnot. Um, so, at the preliminary stage, they basically just say any disturbance or placement of film material in wetlands or rivers may require a permit from them, um, but if all rivers and wetlands can be avoided during construction, which is anticipated, um, then that's possible no permit is required. So, it's super, um, it's, it's a overview is basically what they provide. Um, but a definitive consultation from the Army Corps will be gathered during the actual design process, as we normally do. That's all. That's all I have. If anyone, if the public has comments or anything, I'm sure.
Yeah, so then, as, as part of the public hearing, we were opening it up to the public and our council if they have any comments in regards to the environmental impacts of the projects that she had listed. The raw water line, the east and west receiving stations, the storage tank. Um, as she mentioned, Root Street Water Main, that has been, we are not doing that because of the, the raw water line that's going on Kayton Farm. We'll be doing, using, we'll use that instead of having to do that other water main. So, if there's any comments, let us know. Uh, it'll be recorded here today. Um, they'll then be sent down to the I E P A. Um, if comments aren't provided at this meeting here today, you have up to November sixteenth, two, uh, two thousand twenty-three to submit comments. They can be submitted here to Karina, who is the project manager with Strand Associates at one one seven zero Hobart Road, Joliet, Illinois, six oh four three five. Her email is C. O. R. R. I. N. A. Period, capital P. E. T. R. O. U. at strand, S. T. R. A. N. D. dot com. Or you can also call her at eight one five, seven four four, four two zero zero, extension thirty-one fifty-nine. The city also has the reports and our project plan on attached to these, uh, meeting agenda here today. So, the public can read them there. They're also for viewing at the clerk's office, and that'll, that'll be up to November sixteenth. So, if there's any questions by anybody, please let us know.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience, uh, that would like to make public comment with respect to the alternate, alternative water source distribution system improvements and the preliminary environmental impacts determination? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional.
Good evening, Stuart Sylfer. I just was wondering if proper notice was given for this public hearing. I know that it was posted on the city's website, but it never gave an address of the meeting location?
It was also in the paper last week, and which did give the address up for it at that point. We have confirmation that it was published.
But the, but the city website that indicated it didn't indicate where the location was, so if somebody didn't see that ad?
Well, we needed to pu- publish it in the paper is all we needed to do. So, the website was actually up in addition. Huh?
We did put it on this, uh, you did put it on the website without an address.
Correct, but the proof, the newspaper publication was actually the only notification we needed to do. So, these were subsequent to, or additional to that.
Anybody else like to address, make public comment? Anybody on council? Okay. Everybody has had a chance to make comment. Uh, with that, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by all the person overland, seconded by Alderman Sipity, to close the public hearing at seven thirteen P. M. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Rashad.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepini.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kugel.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, we are back in regular session at seven thirteen P. M. Karina, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, for the presentation. Um, moving on to the next agenda item is the approval of the minutes of the Crest Hill City Council meeting held on October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alder Woman Giselle, for the approval of the minutes of the October sixteen, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepini.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kugel.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rashad.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
And Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
You also have before you the minutes of the work session held on October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Questions or comments? Roll, uh.
I thought we made a motion first.
Yeah, motion first?
I'll make a motion.
Yes, second.
Motion by Alder Woman Giselle, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sepini.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kugel.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rashad.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
And last one is the approval of the minutes of the work session held on October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alder Woman Giselle, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the work session minutes of October thirty, two thousand twenty-three. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kugel.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rashad.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepini.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and council. I do not have any agenda items, but I'm happy to answer any questions if I can.
Any questions of city attorney? Thanks, Mike. Moving on to our director of public works, Mr. Blaine Klein. Good evening, Blaine.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Excuse me, uh, three items for you tonight. Uh, the first is to seek approval of pay request number nine from Vissering Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and dispersment for a total amount of one million, two hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars and ninety-six cents.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have a motion by all the person overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of pay request number nine from Vissering Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and dispersment for a total amount of one million, two hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars and ninety-six cents. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepini.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kugel.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rashad.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Second item is approval of pay request number fourteen from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and dispersment for a total amount of eight hundred and ten thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollar, fifty-two dollars and two cents.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by all the person overland, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for the approval of pay request number fourteen from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and dispersment for the total amount of eight hundred and ten thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars and two cents. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepini.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kugel.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
And John Rashad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
And approval of pay request number fifteen from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and dispersment for a total amount of one hundred seventy-one thousand, three hundred eighty-one dollars and three cents.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alder Woman Giselle, for the approval of pay request number fifteen from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and dispersment for total amount of one hundred seventy-one thousand, three hundred eighty-one dollars and three cents. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kugel.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rashad. Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepini.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
That's all I have tonight, unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions of public works?
Yes, Blaine, did you get an answer for the yard waste pickup?
I did not get an answer. I did ask to have extended one week, and I did not get an answer back yet, so I'll follow up tomorrow morning.
Thank you, and also wanted to thank you for, uh, removing those, uh, benches on Theodore.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that you took initiative and removed them. Thank you.
And as of right now, the last yard waste pickup is the week of November twenty-seventh, correct?
Yeah, the last weekend, so it'll be December first, is that last Friday?
Unless there is an extension.
I'm asking for an extension for one week into that first full week of December, correct? So, if that's confirmed, I'll pass along.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, thanks, Blaine. Uh, moving on to our city engineer, Ron Wedeman. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one item tonight. Um, looking for a motion to approve change order number one for the city of Crest Hill Welcome Sign Project for an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand, four twenty-one fifty at the location which is presented at Carolon Lakes.
Motion would be in order.
Mayor, I have, I have just a, a comment on this. I'd like to get, you know, input. We've talked about this already, but, uh, I'm just kinda curious. Nobody's enamored with the new location, uh, uh, for this welcoming sign. Uh, people have really come through and, uh, Ron, the program you put together here with, uh, Carolon Lakes, I think, is, is fantastic, but we're still not enamored with the location. Is there an option just to leave things as they are right now? Maybe put some flowers over there or something, maybe improve the landscaping of, of that, of that location? Anybody got any thoughts on that, or Ron, maybe you could comment on it?
Well, actually, Blaine informed me that, uh, we tried to do that actually a couple of years ago. The owner would not let them on the property to do any work.
Yeah, they don't have an agreement.
So, we, we don't have an agreement for that sign.
Yeah.
So, if he wanted to, he could take the sign down tomorrow. Um, I know he hasn't, but I mean, we just don't have any rights to that currently, right now. Um, you know, could it stay? I, I guess it can, but it is older. Um, it's gonna need some work soon. Um, so, yeah, again, without having any rights to it, I mean, not a lot that we can do right at this point. I mean, we were trying to improve and get out the new city logo and colors, you know, and matching signs to the city. That was kinda the directive here. That's what we were trying to do. So, I mean, could it stay if that's something council wants to do, but then we're just taking our chances.
Joe, I can agree with you, 'cause, uh, the more I kept looking at it through the weekend, my head get, last Monday, my mind wasn't into the subject due to another subject. Um, I'm, I'm not comfortable with spending all that money and in the end, you're gonna have all that cornfield that you're not gonna see the sign very good most of the year. So, I think something that we should table or stop for now. Let's think for different options. I'm not sure why we're rushing to make a quick decision.
Well, the o- the only reason of the rush is that we're under contract, so we have a stone. So, um, if we don't install it, then I just have to work with public works to, to store it there until we come up with a final location. That's pretty much the only reason is that we were under contract and we entered that contract when we originally approved the location, so.
What were some of the other locations that we're gonna be looking at, Ron, that we don't necessarily have approval for?
Uh, Larkin. That one there, we have to go back. That'll be something we're gonna address in, on the next budget, um, to get a location. I'm having a couple of ideas, but we haven't come to council yet. Um, the other location, Nate, was the one on Gaylord that you were looking for. Um, and then any other locations that might pop up that we haven't really covered, so. So, there is a second phase that this could be done in. You know, we can go back and revisit it. It's just, you know, we'll just purchase the stone and have to have it installed later.
Uh, I mean, you guys know most of my concerns from past meetings on this, but I really want there to be a sign on Renwick Road. It just feel, I just feel like this location, we have some obstacles with the property there just to the west. And there's nothing that would really stop him from putting up evergreen trees or a fence or anything on his property that could potentially block the, the, the sign altogether. So, I just, I don't like the unknowns of that, so that's why I'd be voting against it right now.
Carol asks again, is there a motion for an approval? Second time, is there a motion for an approval? Third time? There is no motion to approve, 'cause that means it's off the table.
It's off the table. Yeah. I would just, I will let the contractor know that, uh, that this is the case, and we'll purchase the material, and I'll work with, with public works to store it, um, somewhere, um, until we're ready to install it at, on another location at a later date. I think the only.
Mike, since there is no action was taken, should we table it for future? So, or?
Well, I think it just dies on the vine, because there's been no motion. It can be brought back at any time for a vote if there is going to be a motion. Um, the one issue that I would throw out there is the easement was negotiated with Carolon Lakes. I believe it has been recorded, so I don't know whether, uh, Carolon Lakes would want that easement released at this point if it's not going to be a, a, a viable, uh, location. I mean, if I were them, I would not wanna have an easement out there for something that isn't going to happen, so. Um, I guess, Ron, could you approach Carolon Lakes and see?
I will talk to Cindy, um, tomorrow.
Okay.
And let her know that you, the city council has decided not to move in that location and how they wanna handle the easement.
I mean, if you think that there's still some chance it would come back, I think you should probably table it if there's some thought on the council that, 'cause I don't wanna go through the trouble of having the, the, uh, easement released and then we have to go, if, if it does come back, and now we're back to trying to negotiate that lease, or that easement again, and then having it re-recorded, so. Uh, if there's some, some thought that it might come back, I would say table it indefinitely.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Now, seconded.
We have a motion to table the request by all the person overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rashad.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepini.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kugel.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And that's all I have, unless there's any other questions?
Any questions of city engineer?
No, thank you, Ron, for doing all of that work.
Thanks, Ron.
No, that's fine. I mean, I'll agree which you guys want. Those are long-term decisions, you know. I appreciate your help.
All right, moving on to community development. Our economic development director, Mr. Ron Metzner. Good evening, Ron.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. I have three items, action items this evening. The first item is to approve the implementation of new unconditional agreement and consent requirements for special zoning approvals as outlined in the November sixth, twenty twenty-three memorandum from myself, acting community and economic development director, Metzer.
Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by all the person overland to approve the implementation of new unconditional agreement consent requirements for special zoning approvals as outlined in the November sixth, two thousand twenty-three memorandum from acting community and economic development director, Metzner. Questions or comments? Roll call.
John Rashad.
Yeah.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepini.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kugel.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
The second item is to approve, uh, to designate the mayor and Alderman, Alder Woman Giselle to represent the city council on future internal economic development related discussions with city staff as outlined in the November sixth, twenty twenty-three memorandum from myself, acting community and economic development director, Metzer. Uh, I would just note that, uh, on, um, Steve Golden's last day here at the city, I did ask him if he had received any input from the city council regarding which alderperson would be an appropriate person to identify in this motion, and he, uh, shared with me that he had a number of email communications with, uh, a number of the city council elected officials, and based on that, he felt that there was, uh, broad support for Alderman Giselle's designation in this group.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by all the person overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson to approve to designate the mayor and Alder Woman Giselle to represent the city council in future internal economic development related discussions with city staff as outlined in the November sixth, two thousand twenty-three memorandum from acting community and economic development director, Metzner. Questions or comments?
I just wanna make a comment. I wanna thank the council for their confidence in me, and I will appreciate the support, and I will do my best to work with, uh- me, and I will appreciate the support, and I will do my best to work with, uh, with you, Ron, and continue working with our community and our businesses, I appreciate that.
Roll call please Chris.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes. Well, do I vote for myself?
Sure.
If you can, if you want.
I can?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Marcus Apiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And the, uh, third item is to, of the approval of the waiver of the building permit fee for the Will County Child Advocacy Center, uh, remodeling project in the amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred and thirty dollars.
So moved, just presented.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Boucher, for the approval to waive the building permit fee for the Will County Child Advocacy Center in the amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred and thirty dollars, questions or comments? Roll call.
Marcus Apiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
And Tina Overland?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
I have, um, one brief update, uh, I thought the council might be interested to hear that the, uh, community development department issued the building permit for the foundation for the five hundred and seventy-seven thousand square foot, uh, warehouse facility MIF is developing on Ladis Parkway at the end of last week, and in conjunction with the issuance of that permit, the city collected just over eighty thousand dollars in permit fees.
Thank you.
Okay.
Nice.
Any questions to Ron? All right, thanks Ron. Uh, moving on to our police department, police chief Ed Clark, good evening.
Good evening Mayor and Council, I don't have any agenda items this evening, uh, I would just, just to remind everybody, tomorrow we will be conducting training outside on, uh, Crest Hill Drive again, as we had earlier in October, uh, we'll be closing the road, closing the road from about noon to about six, so that we can, uh, do some outside training from use of force, it's mandated and training every year, so, I think we have three more sessions left to get our whole department done and up to date and, uh, to meet that mandate, uh, your packets, your two-week, uh, information packet were available to you, and I'll entertain any questions.
I just, uh, I just forgot, I should one more thing, um, probably on, I, uh, we're getting a couple complaints that it's all overnight parking in Remington.
Okay.
You can look at that, especially, um, Tahoe, I hope.
Tahoe, okay.
Tahoe, yeah, and, um, actually all the streets, to be honest.
All the streets again?
All far, they're, they're parking overnight.
Will do.
Anybody else? All right, thanks Ed, moving on to Mayor's report, I do not have any agenda items this evening, but, uh, a few announcements, uh, the first was our open house that was held here on October twenty-first in this building, uh, I certainly want to extend my thanks and gratitude to several individuals and groups that helped us out, uh, first to the, uh, the vendors that we had, we had members of the Lockport Township Fire Protection District, uh, were here passing out goodies and answering questions from the public, we had representatives from the White Oak Crest Hill Library that were here, uh, answering questions in regards to the library and, uh, their duties and responsibilities, we also had representation from the Lockport Township Park District that was here, um, with all of the programs that they have and trips and everything else, and also to the Crest Hill Police Department, our officer Heidi Alwa was here representing, um, the DARE and, uh, the Special Olympics, um, fundraising efforts by our police department, and also Officer Brian Barnes was here with the K nine dog Wyatt, um, I certainly want to extend my gratitude to, uh, Will County Executive Jennifer Bertino Turant, to our state senators, uh, Meg LaFrenkapple and Rachel Ventura, our re- state representatives, uh, Representative Natalie Manley, Representative Dagmar Evilar, and, uh, Representative Larry Walsh was here also, um, certainly want to thank Lockport Township Park District Prairie Bluff for the, uh, food that was served, and also to Beggar's Pizza, who made a very nice donation to the city of Crest Hill for our open house, um, certainly want to thank members of our police department who gave about three hundred tour, three hundred people were involved in the many tours, from our police chief Ed Clark and our deputy chief Jason Opia, Jason Opiola and Ryan Dapsick were giving the tours for the two hours, and to the employees, I know Chris was helping for the, um, the tours of the city hall side, um, so, um, like I said, we had about three hundred people here total, uh, most of the food went, um, everybody seemed to be impressed with the building, um, got a lot of positive feedback, so I wanna thank everybody, all the employees, um, certainly want to thank, uh, Mayor Bel De Haro, I want to thank Blaine from Public Works, Tony Jalaska from our Building and Grounds Department, the other members of the, um, Public Works Department did a lot of work on this building to get everything in order for the, um, open house, I think it was a great event, it was very positive, and like I said, a lot of positive feedback from, uh, the people that were here, and, um, I certainly extend my gratitude to everybody that played any part, city council included, for, um, putting everything together for that day, I think it was a great event, and, um, it was a great showcase for the city of Crest Hill, um, just to piggyback on, on Ron's comments, we did have a grand opening groundbreaking for Midwest Industrial Funds, uh, for the five hundred and seventy-seven thousand square foot spec building that's being built behind the Amazon off of Division Street, um, and this, in this, um, economic climate that we live in, to build a five hundred and seventy-seven thousand square foot building with the interest rates as, as they are now, is pretty impressive, um, so, we're very happy to, to have Midwest Industrial Funds in the city of Crest Hill, they are a first-class professional development crew, from what they have built in the past, I think it's gonna be a positive impact on the city of Crest Hill, and, um, uh, we certainly welcome them and maybe some, uh, future developments down the road also, and last, my last comments is, uh, in regards to, uh, Veterans Day coming up here in a few days, certainly want to extend my gratitude and thanks to every veteran, um, for their commitment and their sacrifices, their dedication, not only to the country, but to our community, um, it is because of them and the sacrifices that they met, they made, um, for their dedication to the military, that we have the freedoms that we enjoy today, so, we will honor them on Veterans Day at post ten eighty, um, with a ceremony at ten o'clock, um, but we should honor them every day for the veterans and thank them for the sacrifices that they made to make this, uh, country the greatest country in the world, uh, with that, I will try to entertain any questions that anybody may have.
I just have a couple of comments, uh, first of all, uh, our clerk is an elected official, she's not an employee, so, thank you for coming and for hosting the back area, and Mayor, you forgot, you forgot, um, Ron, uh, Tman, which is our engineer, he was here the whole day, so as Don Seaman was here, and our, uh, finance director Lisa Benefit, and to our treasurer, and to every elected official, we're all here, uh, that day, we all showed our support to our city and also our attorney, um, was present as well, thank you Mike for coming, so you missed those, I just don't want to miss anyone because it's only fair to mention everybody, and yes, it was a nice event, um, you know, that we were included somehow, but thank you Mayor.
Okay, Blaine, I just wanna, um, thank you for, I asked about the display out front, I was told that you had, uh, that was your creative forces behind that, and it looked really, really lovely, so, for you and who, anybody who might have helped you, that was really a nice touch.
I do have the, excuse me, the credit can go to my wife, I, I learned that over the last decade.
Well, you tell her she did a marvelous job.
Thank you.
And I just wanna piggyback on Alderman, um, Gazal's, um, Mr. Weidman, um, Mr. Seaman, and, uh, Lisa Benefit also gave tours of the front area also.
That's true.
So I just wanted to thank them for helping out when my body couldn't take no more.
All right, moving on to our city-
There is an action question?
Sure.
People that were here, I didn't hear you saying the mayor, Joey, yeah?
That's right, Terry Darcy was here.
Unless I didn't hear it.
Yeah, Terry Darcy was here, the first, uh, alderwoman, this is why I don't like to mention names, because you know you're gonna forget somebody along the way, but Judy Vodisic, Judy Gale at the time, was our first female alderwoman that was here, there were some past, uh, employees, past city council members that were here, past employees that were here, and they were all invited, and it was good to see them here, and I apologize if I forgot anybody, you know, you start listing people off and you're bound to forget people, so, all right, moving on to our city clerk's report, Christine Boucher-Hawke, good evening Chris.
Good evening, thank you so much, I have nothing to report, but I just do want to announce that all city offices will be closed this Friday, November tenth, in honor of Veterans Day, and we'd like to thank everybody, all veterans, past, present, and future for your services, thank you.
Any questions of city clerk? All right, thanks Chris, city treasurer's reporter, Treasurer Glenn Conklin, good evening Glenn.
Good evening Mayor and Council, I have four items, two to report, two for action, would ask the courtesy of, uh, taking number twelve, and then making that the last item during my, uh, report, do I need a motion for deviating from the agenda, is it okay just to go through with that?
No, it's okay.
Okay, so, uh, uh, first item is I seek to, uh, seek your approval on a list of bills issued through November seventh of two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of three million eight hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred and three dollars and fifty-seven cents.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the list of bills, questions or comments, roll call.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
And Marcus Apiti?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, uh, the next two are gonna be just, uh, uh, require no action, just reporting, uh, quarter of compensation time buyback for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-three through September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three was in the amount of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and five dollars and forty-seven cents, also informationally our regular and overtime payroll from October ninth, two thousand twenty-three through October twenty-second of two thousand twenty-three, total two hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. Getting on to the last item, uh, I seek your approval for a resolution ratifying and approving an employee leasing agreement by and between the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and GovTemp's LLC.
You need a motion?
I do.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Uh, Glenn, uh, just, uh, just to clarify on that, now, are we talking about, uh, a two-week extension here right now?
At this point, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The contract on the, uh, I believe it's three months has been filled, and now we're on revolving two weeks.
Okay, just confirming, thank you.
We have a motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for the approval of a resolution ratifying and approving employee leasing agreement by and between the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and GovTemp USA LLC, questions or comments?
A question, did, this is, I don't wanna use anybody's name, but, uh, this is the continuation of the, from the contract we already had, it's just the, the extension?
That'd be correct, our contract is with GovHR, they have them provide us with a, uh, human resources, uh, excuse me, representative, um, there are a couple of things, um, and I will, after the vote, I would ask that we, uh, go into rep, into executive session, I think there was a little bit of dialogue we should have, just to tighten up some loose ends in regard to a legal matter that has been requested by GovHR, or if you choose, we could enter executive session and finalize the vote on this afterwards, but I would ask that we go to executive session on a couple of details relative to this contract.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just looking for clarity that this contract with GovTemp is for the, the same individual, so.
Correct.
I, I, I feel more comfortable doing what Glenn just said, and do the executive session first before we, before we vote on this.
That's totally different, we got a, we have a motion on the floor, and I'm not changing it.
I think it'd be best to go into executive session before the vote happens.
I cannot make that motion, I understand that.
I already had a motion, I'm not changing it. No, he already, we have-
My seconded it.
I, I think it's important that we hear everything before the vote is taken.
Again, Mayor, I'm, make, I made a motion, I'm not changing my motion.
I think we have a recommendation-
Again, Mayor, I have a motion, I'm not changing my motion.
Robert's rules would dictate that we call-
Okay, you're not gonna tell me how I need to vote.
To our city attorney, Mike?
There's a motion in a second.
Pardon me?
There's a motion in a second.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Mister Attorney.
Are there any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Marcus Apiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
No.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
I'd ask for a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, resolution one-one-nine-oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd ask someone, uh, or request someone make a motion to go into executive session.
Not right now, because we still have, um, we have a meeting that we're still conducting, we will make that motion when it comes to it.
Thank you, that's my report, I'll take any questions if they have-
Questions of the treasurer? All right, thanks Glenn, unfinished business, we have nothing on the agenda, anybody? New business, anybody? Committee liaison reports, anyone? City council comments, positive city council comments, anything you'd like to share with your constituents, anybody wanna go first? We'll begin with Alderman Dyke.
Thank you Mayor, uh, just wanna say thank you to all the veterans out there, not just for this coming Veterans Day, but all year round, so anytime you see a veteran walking down the street in a store, it doesn't have to be Veterans Day to give them a thank you, they really do appreciate it, so, appreciate all those vets out there.
Alderman Boucher?
Oh, I'll second what he said, and it was nice that all of us, since I had to went to the service, they all came back, so that's, that was an honor, I'm really proud of that.
Alderman Jefferson?
Just to echo what Alderman Dyke was saying about, thank you to the veterans and, uh, their families for their, their sacrifice for our country.
Alderman Gazal?
Wanna thank, uh, special thanks to, uh, the Seagulls family for, uh, donating four hundred pumpkins on Halloween Day, um, I worked my arms really hard, but, uh, I appreciate their support for our community, um, families and kids were really happy to, uh, to receive that, also to the Lions for continuing and hosting the Halloween roast, um, that in my, my subdivision, so we appreciate that, and, um, just a positive, uh, comment, speak if even your voice shakes, don't let anyone control you.
Alderman Person Overland?
Well, um, continuing with the Veterans Day, I'd like to say that there is, um, every year, they place wreaths at the veterans' graves at Abraham Lincoln Cemetery, and it's a wonderful, wonderful thing to see, to participate in, and I know they take donations in many forms, but where I work at Newmark, we take donations for that, and my company will match it up to a certain dollar amount, and it's, it's just a nice thing to do to remember all those people who might not have family to remember them, so, if you want to do that, uh, there's many other ways I'm sure to do it, but you can do it through us, so I would appreciate people supporting that program, it's a wonderful program, thank you.
Alderman Apiti?
I'd also like to, uh, thank all the veterans for their, uh, service to this country, that's very much appreciated, thank you.
Alderman Albert?
I'd also just wanna thank everybody that was, uh, played a part in the open house and ribbon cutting, I thought it did turn out to be a very nice morning, and my, my family certainly enjoyed the tours of the police department, and then of course, uh, thanks to all the veterans out there.
Alderman Kuba?
Thank you veterans and your families.
Okay, public comment, anyone like to address any council, please step to this podium, your name is required, address is option.
Linda Dyke, seventeen hundred Kelly, I just wanna take and thank the chief, the Will County Sheriff's Department, the Crest Hill Police, I think ISP, uh, the attorney, for getting that job well done.
Thank you.
Keep going, the rest of them, thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. I have a few things. Stuart's like for two-one-five-two-six, Brayley Drive. The first thing is, didn't you guys approve new signs for the front of the dais at one point?
I believe we did.
What's the status on those?
I don't believe they're in yet.
Okay. Second one is in regards to my comment earlier about the notice, uh, as much as I appreciate it going in the newspaper, if you have it posted on your website, you really should still indicate where it is. It seems like something's being hidden up high, and you talk about transparency. That really was not transparent. Not knowing where this public meeting was being held. Um, another, one other thing that I would like to get clarification on, or, or see if it could be done. It was, it was brought out a few weeks ago that Crest Hill is responsible for Gaylord just south of Renwick and a little bit north of Gaylord for the patching that was done. When are we going to paint the rest of the road? Because everything is only painted on the west side of the road, and none of the stripes are painted on the east side of the road. In fact, the Chevron's go just to the middle of the road. So is there some point that we're going to finish the rest of them? Because I sit here and I understood through that meeting that Crest Hill is responsible for both sides of the road, but residents that don't come here and don't view, look at it and say, Crest Hill needs to do something there, because it's really not clear. Is that going to be done, Sue?
Well, how I can answer that is, is right now we're in a quandary, because in the next year or so, the water commission's going to be tearing that road up, put a new water main in. So, we're spending the least amount of money possible not to, to, to get wasted when it gets tore up, to run the new water main right down the middle of the, the, the middle of Gaylord, which then it'll be reconstructed and resurfaced and restripped all after that project.
But that's a year away.
Right, but I mean, we didn't have money to do all of the, I don't, I, I don't have money to do all the striping. If that's what you're asking.
Okay, all right.
So what we did was, we, we, we replaced what was disturbed and not all of it. You know, we, we did a lot of payment marketing here this year. We just didn't have any more money in the budget.
Okay. I just, it, it, it really looks bad for Crest Hill.
And, and I get it. I, I agree with you. I would have loved to resurface it too, because I mean, I don't know if we're gonna, if the, if the water commission job will stay on schedule or not, but that's something here. We're juggling with the water commission, you know, when, how much money do we want to spend before they come and tear it up? Because we'll get the same comments, oh, look, you just resurfaced it, you know, and now they're tearing it up, so we're kind, we're kind of balancing and seeing how those, how those contracts come together.
Is there any, Chief, is there any legal issues regarding traffic when those are not painted and?
No, it, it, traffic's regulated by the IVC, whether there's paved or, or there's the markings or not.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. My, my last comment, I, I want to clarify and just make sure that I'm reading something correctly from the minutes from the ten-twenty-three, um, work session regarding the places for eating tax update. Um, if I read the minutes correctly, which I hope that they are accurate, Mayor, did you issue a license to somebody who didn't pay their places for eating taxes?
I did.
Wasn't that against the ordinance?
I was trying to be business friendly and help out the business establishment.
Today you're being business friendly about that, but what about the gentleman from the cheesecake place?
I was doing what I thought was in the best interest of the city when it was brought back to my attention.
When they don't pay their taxes, that's in the best interest of the city?
I, I rectified the situation. Everything has been brought up to date, and they are paid in full.
I don't think that matters.
Okay. Your comments are well taken.
And I think based upon that action, where that you violated city ordinances and the way that you treated the gentleman from the cheesecake factory, I think you should step down as mayor. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, is there a need for an executive session, Mike?
My understanding is there's going to be a motion for an executive session.
Yes, C-one. I'll make a motion to go executive session for C-one. And also, the second, uh, request will be C-eleven pending allegations.
Threat of litigation. We have a motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Overland for an executive session for two C-one and two C-eleven. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Daryl Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Zoll.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Apiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we'll be going into executive session at seven fifty-three PM.